Amen, amen. Let's give the Lord a hand praise this evening. Come on, come on. Let's give him a hand praise for the work of the things that he does for our lives. Let's give him a hand praise because we serve a risen Savior. We serve a wonderful God and even in this time, can everybody hear me? I just want to make sure we can, I can be heard. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I just want us to remember and I thank you, Deacon Obu, for reminding us that we, Pastor, still in some back experiencing back pain. And I'm asking each and every one of us, there's some of the sound of my voice, to continue to pray for him for a complete healing and a recovery. And we know that God is a healer. I mean, you believe that, don't you? God is a healer and the devil is a liar. And the pastor showed how we have the victory over his minor setback, because I call this a minor setback. Yeah, his back is hurting, but it's still a minor setback. So we just have to continue to trust God and believe that God is going to take care of him and heal him even from this situation. Um, this is a very important week for us, uh, for most believers in Christ. And if you like me, it invokes a great study into the seven last words uh, spoken by Jesus Christ from the cross. And it's important for each of us to know and, and to see what it impacts and how it impacts our lives. Um, I don't have any illustrations because I'm not, I don't, I don't have any things that I can just show up. But I will be asking some questions. And I would like to make sure that everybody participate in the questions. Because I'm in the presence of some Bible scholars. Everybody I'm sitting looking at right now know that you taking a class and hear the word Bible church. So I'm looking at the scholars right now and it's going to make our Bible study go with a breeze. So if that's okay, can we get started? I'd like for us to go ahead and get started because I don't want us to be here all night. But then again, with some of these questions, it might invoke a long situation. So each of us, each of the seven last words have been, have a meaning behind it. Each of them has a meaning behind the utterance. And I believe that Jesus was showing us how we can live a life of complete dependence upon him and how we are to operate in this world. So I have a question for you. What is the importance of the seven last words? And what do they mean to you, anybody?
Repeat the seven last words Reverend Allen. We scholars, my memory ain't that great.
You mean to tell, you mean to tell me you didn't study them like that? Tell me any word that you can think of, any one of them.
Listen, I've been working all day. Help us out here. Come on Reverend Allen.
Well, I'm gonna get into it, but what did, does, does the seven last words have any significance to you? Does, I mean, you don't even have to know the words. What does it mean to see Jesus on the cross? What did it do for you when you know Jesus gave his life for you?
All right, since, since I threw myself out there, all I can remember is it is finished and that's three words. That means there's four missing that I can't remember. But I'm a, I'm a, I'm a talk about the three I do remember. And uh, on the cross, when Jesus said it is finished, that means he had, um, he had completed the Father's will. Um, he sacrificed his life for us. When it's finished, that means he took all our sins. Um, they were buried on the cross. And that was, uh, that those last words gave us salvation and, and hope. Now, y'all give me a minute to think about the seven words and somebody else help me out.
You don't have to go through all of them. All you had to do was give me one and that was good. That was good. That's what, that's what you remember and that's good. That's, that's excellent. Because that's what we should be remembering. What does it do for, what does it do for you when you think about the seven last words, even if it's one of the saints? Even if it's just one thing, how does it impact your life? And, and just say, I, I got something to say because I, I'm trying to see you at the same time, trying to look at my screen.
Reverend Allen?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, family. Well, the, the, uh, the seven last words were really powerful and I'm so glad that the churches do, uh, remind us because this is what, uh, it says, uh, "Father forgive them, for they know not what they do." And um, that lets you know that he was in, he was about his father's business. You know, he was doing what he was led to do and that is to forgive them because, um, uh, because by doing that, he has forgiven us and he's opened up the door for us to be able to have eternal life, salvation.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, anybody else? Can you remember a word?
One that, um, I just heard this morning and I'll relate it was Eli, Eli Lama Saboktine, which translates, "My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" And this morning as, um, Sister Rhonda was doing her devotion, I was, I heard Tony Evans speak to that. And he mentioned that throughout the Bible, Jesus always referred to God as the Father or as his father. But there's only one time in the Bible that is recorded that he referred to the Father as God. And it was because there was some broken relationship at that moment as he had all the saint, the sins of the Brinsons on him. As he had all the sins of the Fords on him, as he had all the sins of the Greenleys on him and the Carters. And he had all those sins and he just had to cry out, "My God, my God." But we know that God is faithful and that he is still a restorer and he resurrected him with all power.
Yes, 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 yes. Will there be another?
So Reverend Allen, uh, when you, when you hear it and just breaking it off of how everyone has already spoken, it, we get to the point sometimes ourselves, we feel that God has abandoned us. You know, and you can be overcome with emotions, you know, behind whatever baggage you're carrying, that thinking that God just, you know, just washed his hands with you. But he never left, just like he never left Jesus. So in echoing what Reverend Greenlee said, it, when you have that much weight on you, you have no other choice but to find yourself sometimes in a position where you cry out, you know, and asking God in that personal conversation, "Why are you leaving me by myself? Why are you turning your back on me?" And in the end, he never left you because his word says he will never leave you nor forsake you. You know, when others turn away, he's still there. So it just gives you that when Jesus dealt with it and felt like God turned him away because of the weight of the world on him, we get to that same point, but we still have to find ourselves doing what Jesus did in that position and cry out, you know, to him. I mean, we might not say Eli, Eli, you know what I'm saying? We might just say God, we might say Jehovah, we may say Yahweh, you know? We might just say, "Lord, Lord, why are you leaving me by myself?" So, but I think we, for me, it, because I've been in that place where I felt like God just forgot about me. And I had to find a point to where I was ready to, I had to cry out.
Amen, amen. You know, and it's, that's very good because even when I sat down, um, this morning and very early this morning, and I started because I, one thing that I wanted to do, I, I didn't want to just come out and just start talking about anything. So I said, "God, what is it that you want me to talk about?" And this is what he wanted me to talk about. So it invoked me to go into a, a study of it to understand what was the meaning behind the words. And in each one of the words, there is a meaning. There is a meaning in each one of the words. So if somebody would turn to Luke 23, uh, 34. Luke 23, 24.
He said 23, 24?
23, 34.
Oh, 23, 34?
Yes.
All right, I'll read it. Luke 23, 34 says, "Then Jesus said, 'Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do,'" and they parted his raiment and cast lots.
Yes. "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do." This is a word of forgiveness. Jesus was praying for the forgiveness of the Roman soldiers who were crucifying him and all others who were involved in the crucifixion. He was praying, "Father, forgive them." He was praying for them. He was lifting them up before his father because they didn't have any clue about what they were doing. They were just going out and they said, "This is someone that we must take." They had no clue why he was even there. When they said, if you can remember parts of a story, part of the story, when they asked, "Who do we take out?" "Barabbas?" Or "Jesus"? Who do we save? And they said, "Save Barabbas, send Jesus to the cross." They didn't have a clue of what they were doing. So what does that teach us about our relationship with others? Because this is all about how we are to be more like him. So what did it teach us about relationships? How we have our relationships with other people? What is it somebody's done to you and you've had to put it aside and kick it away and ask to forgive them? How does it, how, how does it hit you? What does it do to you? Take a moment to think about, somebody that's done something to you and now you're in that position, they're ready to take you out. Or you're ready to take them out. They have scandalized your name. How do you respond? What do you do? What do you do?
Well, from a fleshly, from a fleshly point, the first, you want to, you want to retaliate, but as, uh, you're born again, you're a believer, um, and you, you have made the declaration and the, the commitment to serve the Lord with, with all that we have until we pass from this life to the next life, we cannot retaliate. We have to pray and consider, and continue, continue to love that person. Regardless, you might be afraid, you might be angry, you might be a combination of both. We have to trust God that he's going to bring you out of that situation. Um, but you know, our fleshly parts would say, hey, retaliate, but we know spiritually we cannot do that. We represent him and he rep, he showed us, he set an example by this, uh, that even in the midst of all that, that he went through, he still was, uh, doing what? Serving the Father, doing what the Father called him to do. And all of us have a, a calling on our lives and we had to continue to, uh, do what he told us to do regardless of what's going on. That doesn't mean we don't have days or we don't get upset as Sister, uh, Deacon Spiffy said. But you still have to set that aside and say, "I, I'm serving the Lord to the day I die and I'm going to do it the way he's telling me to do it." And it takes discipline and it takes practice over a period of time. We're going to make mistakes, but that's the goal.
Amen, amen, amen. Anybody else feel, how, how do you feel? Somebody, somebody has scandalized your name. Somebody has just taken everything that you own. How do you respond?
I believe that, uh, oh, the, the, go ahead, Sister Renee. I, I just believe, um, that, um, it's a maturity. That's the word I'm looking for. You must be very mature in Christ because people can be mean. And if you don't have basis of maturity in God, then I, you can't do it. It's impossible to do it without God. You cannot do it because the, the flesh will not allow you to, allow people to attack you and not respond. But if there is a maturity in God, you can say, well, I'm, I'm, I can move away from that because you know, you're not where I'm at. So I know you don't know God like I know God, so I can move away from him. Because there's, there's times even in Christ that people do things to you and you'd be ready to, um, go off. But you have to remember, I think the key word is just, just strong maturity. You have to know how to let things go, let things roll off your sleeve and not always have a response for sometime. And I always say to people, sometimes you should just learn to listen. And, and listening does not always require a response. And that's where most people make the mistake is every time somebody wants to talk to us about something, we feel we need to respond. Sometimes you need to sit back, pray about things, then respond, not just respond because the person asked you a question. So for me, there, that keyword is maturity.
Okay, okay. Is there another Sister Renee?
Yeah, Reverend Allen, I was going to say that, um, you know, one of the things, um, that God gave us was emotions, you know? And, uh, nobody knows how you feel about everything. So, um, as human beings, we are subject to hurt, you know? And when you feel that, um, immediately, it's not a good feeling, you know? And depending on what the situation is, what it's around you, it takes a while for you to, you know, it's like a beast thing. It takes a while before that sting goes away, you know? But we know that, at least for me, um, it's easier to, to bear it or to, 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 to feel it because I think about the fact that Christ died for me. If he did, he did get beaten the way that he did, you know, the, the, the crown of thorns, you know, being pierced on the side, there was nothing that I couldn't do that could be that severe. Yeah, in my heart, like I said, that beast of death. I can't feel it because I know that he's giving me everything that I need. I can't do anything or say anything that's greater than what he brought me down.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, and, and, and does anybody else have another, does anybody else have another, does he have another? Because it's important that, that, that these are the things that we, that, that as believers in Jesus Christ, because I'm, 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 I'm feeling, I'm hearing something else of the Lord is saying because is it immediate forgiveness or is it forgiveness over time? Do you immediately forgive or do you turn around and say, "I gotta work on it"? I listened to Brother Rusi said it, 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 it takes maturity. It takes maturity. But if you're going to walk in Christ, did Christ, did Christ say, "I'll forgive you next week"? While he's hanging on the cross or did he do it right then and there? How do you respond? Do you respond in anger? Or do you turn around and say, "It's okay. I got you", and walk away and pray? Because that's important. When you are forgiving someone, and this is something that is very difficult for believers and non-believers. When you forgive somebody, guess what you never do? Bring it back up. It is done. It is finished. It is over. And the sooner you forgive them, the quicker it comes out of your spirit to put you in a place where you're going to still respond in an unwise manner. When you forgive somebody, it's over. It is done. I don't, I don't want to think about it anymore. It may come up, but in the process, I can always say, "I've forgiven them." And then that way I'm able to deal with that person in the midst of the situation, in any situation. Because it puts them in a place where they then have to remember. And then they will come back and even come and say, "Do, will you forgive me? Forgive me." Y'all heard me tell the story. I've always, I've had that happen to me multiple times. "Forgive me." And I shrug it off and say, "That's okay. It's good. You're good." Because when you forgive somebody, guess what? You don't treat them the way they treated you. You treat them better than what they treated you. That's what forgiveness does. That's what forgiveness does. It treats the person better than they treated you. That's what Jesus did. They hung him on the cross. They pierced his side. They put a crown of thorns on his head. They whipped him. And yet, he was still able to say, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do." And as believers, that's how we should respond. "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do." Forgive them. So this is a word of forgiveness. That's what it does. It teaches us how to forgive. The next word is Luke 23, 43.
Brother Allen?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. My mother wanted to say something.
Okay. All right. Well, see, I can't see you, so if I start talking, just say, "I got one."
Okay.
I got one.
God bless you.
It's a lot, but I'm going to try to make it just small.
Okay.
You all know I used to live in DC. The house is still there. It, uh, my, my, my daughter repaired it and put it up for sale. And, um, since my husband passed away, you know, I have, I can't live in that house by myself. But I have so much, so many things in my house. I used to walk day and night to buy furniture, me and my husband, to put furniture, put everything in that house. Full the house. It was a three-bedroom house. And then in the basement, we have thing in the basement, second floor, third floor. Somebody going in, in the house, take everything. It's not like somebody who break the house, who opened the door, get it within, which it's somebody we know. I think they say, next, well, when I ask, they say, they went their house. And then when I, uh, when I went back again, the house is empty. They take everything in the house. It was very hard for me to, to forgive those people who take everything in that house. I am, uh, to try to forget that person, this person who go in my house, take everything in that house. It was not like because I'm old, those, those things was bad. Me and my house, we used to go, I think, three times, change the furniture in the house. When I went back in that house, I was shocked, except a one-bedroom, uh, who was locked. Even so, they go there, they take some, some of the thing. And then the furniture in that, uh, in that house, it was locked, the bedroom, that was bare. But if we, they take everything, it was kind of hard for me to, to forgive those person who take those furniture. If, if you open the house, every time you open, ever since you open the house, you start getting in the wall, looking in the wall, a thing in the wall, and then they just take every single thing. I'm just empty-handed, except in the house. It was kind of very, very hard for me to forget these people. Until now, I'm just asking everybody to help me to pray, to forget those things.
Amen, amen, amen. And that's one of the things that we have to always be mindful of. And I like, Bruce, I like what you said, it's a matter of maturity. But we as believers, we should encourage each other to make sure that as we encourage each other, that we're praying for one another, that we're encouraging each other. You know, things are things. Things are things. And people are people. And they're going to do things to you that you cannot imagine that they will do. But when I put myself in the things that I have up against the cross, it is minimal as to what Jesus had to go through just for me. So can I forgive people? Yes. Is it something that, that goes by the wayside? Like I said, the enemy will always bring it back because that's his job. That's what he's supposed to do. He has to remind us of the things that we go through. He's supposed to remind us of the things that we are doing. He reminds us of those things. He is the accuser of the brethren. But even in the midst of it all, we can always look to the cross. They say, "If Jesus forgave those that, uh, that misused him, that tore him down, that tore his body, that looked like you couldn't identify him", then things are things and all we can do is continue to pray. And yes, we must encourage. We must encourage those that go through. Encourage Deaconess Chakwe. We must encourage her. But even this shall come to pass. Even this shall come to pass. Because if you take stock on everything that you've lost, you've gained. You've gained more than what you had because you still have life and you still have a roof over your head. And you're in a place of love and concern and caring. And that's what's important. That's what's important. Jesus got beat and he's felt bad. But even in the midst of it, he said, "Forgive them" because they didn't know what they were doing. Luke 23, 43. Somebody would read that for us?
Um, my cross nation has said, "And he said to me, 'Truly I pray to you, today you will be with me in paradise.'"
He said, "Truly I say to you, truly I tell you, today you will be with me in paradise." You will be with me in paradise. That is a word of salvation. Jesus was between two thieves, one on his right, one on his left. One of them said, "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." And Jesus answered that and said, "Today you'll be with me in paradise." This man realized Jesus hadn't done anything to him. He hadn't done anything. He was sinless, but yet he was hanging like they were on a cross. And he was hanging there for no reason because he hadn't done anything. Now, some Catholics and, and, and Presbyterian Christians believe that the meaning of today means that it was a direct voyage into heaven at that moment. When he died, he went directly into heaven. Others believe that, and they leave it open for the possibility of the statement to say that he would get there at a later date. That he would get there at a later date. What do you say? What do you say?
If Jesus says today, I think it was that day.
All right. Anybody else? Do you think it took, do you think it, it, it took a minute? It took some time? When we lose a loved one that's in the body of Christ or a member of the body of Christ, what is our encouraging word for that person? What is our encouraging word for the family? That immediately?
Uh, Reverend Allen? Um, those last, uh, you know, just reminds us that if we, if with our loved ones, even with those that may not have repented, even down to the last few moments, God can receive you in. So that's just a, 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 makes my heart feel glad because I do know of a few, uh, family members. I'm not sure whether they did it or not. I'm just believing God that they did. And, and this just reminds me that there was still hope for them even up to the last very moment.
Exactly, 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 exactly. So what responsibilities do we have as it relates to salvation? What is our responsibility? What is our responsibility? Or don't we have one?
We, we do have a responsibility. We have a responsibility with the Great Commission, you know? He charged us to go out and spread the word, uh, um, about salvation to those who are lost. Sorry.
Okay, yes. Yes, we do have a responsibility. We do have a responsibility. We do have a responsibility. Because it is our responsibility to tell others about Jesus Christ. All of us, all of us, all of us are what is, all of us have a responsibility to go out and to tell people. It doesn't matter who you come in contact with. You hear me often say that every one of us have a spiritual gift. But each and every one of us is an evangelist. Each and every one of us, when you become and when you accept Jesus Christ as your Savior, you have a responsibility to encourage somebody else to accept Jesus Christ. And that doesn't mean beat them over the head with the word.
And?
It doesn't mean that. But what it does mean is that you go and you tell them. You tell somebody about the goodness of Jesus Christ. You tell them what the pill, the price that Jesus paid on the cross for their lives. You encourage them to accept Jesus Christ. You can show them. And you can show them better than you tell them by your lifestyle, how you're living, how you're responding to any given situation. And when someone comes to you, they say, "Well, what about, uh, uh, purgatory? What about the halfway point?" You can tell them right then and there. Jesus said, "Today, right now, immediately, you'll be with me in paradise." So you ain't gotta sit and wait for somebody to pray you in heaven. And you have accepted Jesus Christ upfront, you ain't making it.
Amen. Reverend Allen, too, I also, one, before I forget, I wanted to also say, too, even with, with the, um, the young, the person that was next to Jesus on the cross, he simply believed. And I think that when we share the, the, the gospel, that we don't have to make it seem like it's some ritual, ritual or long-drawn-out thing that you have to do. The, the, the Bible says to believe, to, to believe on Him. There are a lot of people that don't believe that there is a God. They don't believe in the Bible. And if they don't believe in the Bible and believe in God, they're certainly not going to believe in Jesus. So the life that we live in the midst of everything and the peace that we have i- is, is an encouragement to those who don't believe. Because if, if I wasn't, uh, a born, a person that was born again through all this chaos, my question would be, how can you remain so peaceful in the midst of going on? Don't you see the food prices going up? Don't you see the gas prices? Aren't you afraid of such and such and such? And then that's when we have the opportunity to say our faith and belief, believe in this God, believe in that there's only one way. Because you, I'm sure you all have heard a lot of different celebrities say that there is, there isn't just one way to heaven. Um, you know, or one way to accept in Christ or one way to, to heaven. And if people think that they can go to heaven by being good, I mean, let's think about that. We all think we do good. So who's judging what is really good that's going to get you into heaven? There are people that do bad things that, that, and do some good things, you know? How does that balance? But I, I think, um, believe in that when Christ said, "Today you'll be with me in paradise", he simply believed. And that action of belief allowed him to, um, to believe that when, when Christ died, he was going to be with him. And so I think that the life that we live in the midst of everything that's going on is trusting God. And the peace that we have is, is a testimony to the ones who don't believe. Like, how can you believe? It's because we're trusting in it, we're trusting in this God that we talk about. We believe in the Bible. We believe Jesus Christ died on the cross. And if we let go of that, we have nothing. So we, we have to believe our faith, um, in who He is and, and what the Bible says.
Yes, yes. See, salvation, a lot of people do not understand salvation. Salvation is believing in Jesus Christ and believing that Christ is the Son of God. Believing, 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 believing. And that is the key.
Okay. Okay, Reverend.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, Emma, what I'm trying to say, because I read here, when I read Emma, uh, the thief, you know, acknowledged his sin. First of all, he acknowledged his sin. As believers, we have to own our mistakes. We have to own our sins. Unfortunately, some, uh, uh, there are some people today, when they pray, they even find it difficult to confess their sins before God. They, they took pride. Because first of all, you have to acknowledge and say, "Hey, I, I'm a sinner." And that's why he gets saved. Because if you don't accept your sin and allow pride to take over you, it becomes a stumbling block. So here is showing us, here is teaching us that as children of God, we have to learn how to acknowledge our sins before God and before man.
Amen. Brother Bruce, is that you?
Excuse me. I'm, I, I was just, like I say, when that, that term of peace and all understanding, it's just, to me, that's very relevant, relevant. Because when you deal with life and death, you deal with being prepared. Being prepared. You're not perfect, knowing that you have done by a person what is, is expected of you. So that, that when that time comes for them to go home, you can, you can revel in peace, knowing that God is a Savior. He's a healer and a protector. A lot of times, people go to films and fall all out and stuff because they don't know.
That's right.
So your job as a, as a, as a believer is to, is to always remind them that if you don't get it right, there's not an end for you. There's, there's no end if we don't get it right. There's no end. I don't care how you look at it. You can turn it around. You can twist it around. You can do all you want to do. But there's no end if you do not get it right. So, you know, the key, going there, falling out and all that, to me, that's just a sign of a person that, you know? And I'm not saying you can't be emotional, because we do, there are times we need to be emotional. There are times we need, but we have to know in Christ that we're the, that we're the maturity, does it's in Christ when to, um, when to do that? So that we know that we're, we're sending the right message.
Amen, amen. And yes, it doesn't mean that just because you see somebody falling out that, that they don't know who God is.
Yeah, I don't mean that.
They don't understand it. Because a lot of times, people do fall out. And they fall out in the process is because, one, they may not hear that person, that person's voice anymore. They may not see that person's face anymore. And that bothers people because they're in their emotional state. But even in the midst of all of that, you can still encourage them. You can encourage those that surround them. Because the one thing you can encourage them with, that if you know the Savior, and you've accepted Jesus Christ as your Savior, and you've had, and, and because of that, you've confessed your sins before the Lord, then guess what? You'll be able to see that person again. Because they'll be in glory as well as you. And you'll see them again. Will you know them as the same way? Not. But you'll know them as a brother and sister in Christ. So I'm looking forward to seeing Mama. I'm still looking forward to seeing Daddy. I'm looking forward to seeing my siblings. I'm looking forward to seeing Auntie and Aunt. Because I know, especially if they knew Christ, I will see them again, but I won't know them as that person. I'll know them as my brother or sister in Christ. Someone turn to John nineteen twenty-six and twenty-seven and read, please. John nineteen twenty-six. John nineteen twenty-six and twenty-seven.
John nine. John nineteen twenty-six and twelve. Twenty-seven. Um, I'm reading out the ESV. So when Jesus, uh, saw his mother and a disciple whom he loved standing nearby, he said to his mother, "Woman, behold your son." Then he said to the disciple, "Behold, your mother." And from that hour, the disciple took her to his own home.
Yes, behold thy, behold, woman, behold thy son and behold thy mother. This is the word of a relationship. This is a word of a relationship. Jesus was entrusting Mary, his mother, to the care of the disciple whom he loved. When Jesus, when Jesus used the word woman, some may think it was sound, it sounded dismissive. In other words, in not saying, "Ma, go to this person." Or, "Mother, go to this person." But he said, "Woman." He said, "Woman." And in the Greek, the term is of respect and tenderness. That's a word of respect and to, woman. So he was tenderly sending and respecting his mom to the person that loved, that he loved and that loved him. So how do you, would you, you, your relationship with your mom? Those that have moms here. How do you review your relationship with them? How do you view your relationship in general with people? How do you view your relationships? Is it just that person? Go ahead, Reverend Greeley.
In this case, um, it reminds me that, um, there's a scripture that says, pure religion is to watch over, um, widows and orphans and to keep yourself unspotted from the world. And for him to ensure that Mary would be taken care of, for the first time reading this, I had to thought, well, where was Joseph? Why was it that he needed to make sure that his mother would be taken care of? So not to go down a rabbit hole, we don't know if he predeceased her or whatever. The fact of the matter is, he understood that during that time, a widow or an orphan, they didn't have any kind of, um, uh, benefits or social services or charities or anything. They had to just wait on whatever would be given to them by society. So even in his weakest hour, he was still looking out for those that he loved.
Amen, amen, amen. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah, Reverend Allen.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Reverend Allen, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Praise the Lord. Um, I also, um, thank you. I also, um, you know, believe that it was, um, in reverence and love and respect for his mother to make sure that she was going to be taken care of. And also because he knew that in hanging on the cross, he had a mission to fulfill. So I, I feel like, um, you know, when I read that, he was somewhat separating himself from his mother and calling her a woman.
Mm-hmm.
In the sense of, yes, I'm your son, but I have a father to answer to and something that I got to do.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, I feel like, but it all still was in reverence and in love. But he had to separate himself from his own mother.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and that's what he had to do. And he was showing that. And as we have relationships even now, as we have relationships even now, Mother Harris, Mother Chiquet, we are to watch over you. It is our responsibility. We have to develop those relationships. There shouldn't be a time when you should be in need of anything. You are a mother. Some of us, our mothers aren't here any longer. But you're here. You're here and you're in the body. And we should look to you. We should make sure that you're okay. You shouldn't need for anything. We should be taking care of you. So when we look out for the widows and the, and the orphan, and the orphans, we should be looking out, looking out for the mothers of the church, their mothers. And just like Jesus entrusted his mother to the disciple that he loved, he's also entrusted you to us because you are mothers. You are mothers, listening to you, comforting you in your, in your darkest times, ensuring that you have all that you need. Yeah, you have family. But once you inside that body, once you inside the, the building, we should be calling you. We should be checking on you. You're a mother. And if we treat our relationships with our mothers and with mothers of the church and with any person in general, when we put our relationship in the right place, then we're acting just like Jesus. We're acting just like Jesus. And for the children of these mothers, they should be able to see in each and every one of us that trust and concern, that they should be able to say, "Take care of my mom. I'm going away for a few days. Take care of my mom. I'm placing her in your hands." And we should be willing to do it gladly. John loved Jesus so much that he was willing to take Jesus' mother right into his home and take care of her from that day forward. Somebody turn to Mark fifteen twen-, uh, fifteen thirty-four? And someone else turn to Matthew twenty-seven forty-six? And it's, and, and I, I might call some people, because I keep hearing the same people read. So evidently, somebody ain't got their Bible open. Let me stop. No.
Reverend Allen, I have mine open, but I turn to Matthew twenty-seven forty-six.
Okay. You can, you can read that one? Yes, read that.
Okay. Matthew twenty-seven forty-six. "And about the ninth hour, Jesus cried with a loud voice, saying, 'Eli, Eli, lama sabat gani.' That is to say, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?"
Okay. Somebody read fifty, Mark fifteen thirty-four.
Amen.
And the ninth hour.
Go ahead, Brother Bruce.
And the, and at the ninth hour, Jesus cried with a loud voice, saying, "Eli, Eli, lama sabat gani", which is being interpreted, "My God, my God, why the, why hast thou forsaken me?"
All right. Eli, Eli, lala, sabat gani. Yes. My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Two disciples saying the same thing. Two of the disciples saying the same thing. And this is a word of abandonment. Abandonment. Not that Jesus was abandoned. Not that he was, that, that, that he was abandoned. But when he said that, he felt, he could feel the Father turning away from him. Because God cannot look on impurity in that sense. He saw pure evil. But what he saw was that Jesus took on pure evil for the sins of this world, for you and I, for those that were before us and those that come after us. He took on all the sins. Some believe that he was crying. It was a cry of one who was truly human. Christ was truly human. He, he was human. He was a human being. And he was so human, he felt forsaken. He felt deserted. He was being put to death by his foes and was being deserted by his friends. And he may have even felt the desertion of God. And he may have even felt the desertion of God. Deserted by his friends. He was abandoned. That's the feeling that he has. He has the same feeling some of us have. When you are or feel abandoned, how do you respond? How do you respond when that person that you felt was always gonna be there, see you go through a situation and now you can't, now they don't even answer your call? How do you feel? How do you respond to that? How do you respond to it? I know how I respond. In my flesh, but in my spirit, I know that I'm never forgotten. I know that I'm never alone. But in my flesh, how does your flesh respond? What does your flesh say? Go ahead and speak because I can't really see you. I heard you though.
That's um, Deaconess Barnes. Um, this brings back to, to my memory when our oldest son um, was with his school and they were on an outing at
Okay, you breaking up?
We got the call that he fell off of something and broke his arm. So I went to go pick him up and I went to go pick him up. Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
I went to go pick him up and um, rushed him over to Kaiser. And when the doctor got ready to set his arm in place so they could put the, um, what's that thing? Uh, the cast on it. I told him, please let me leave the room. Because I, you know, I, I just knew it was gonna be painful. I knew he was gonna be screaming. So he said, okay, well, you can go step out into the, into the waiting room. And so I did, but you know, Kaiser's only so big. So when they set his arm, I could hear him screaming. And that thing hurt me so bad to think that my son was in so much pain from them setting his arm that I couldn't even be in the room. So when I tell you I cannot even imagine how our father felt. And how much pain it gave him that he had to turn away from Jesus and not look upon him in that moment when all minds and all of, all of our sins, all of the sins of the world were literally waiting down on Jesus. I can't even imagine how our father felt.
Yeah, 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 yeah. See, when we look and we think about those situations, Jesus felt abandoned by his father. But can you imagine what his father was thinking? Can you imagine how he must have felt? But he was on a mission. And in order to fulfill that mission, something had to happen. So we are on a mission. We're on a mission. Each and every one of us are on a mission. We're going down different roads, but that road all leads to the same place. Everyone of, all of us have our own stories. But it all leads in the same direction. It all leads in the same direction. So when you feel abandoned, when you feel abandoned, when things don't seem to go your way, how do you respond? I'll go to the Father. And I might even ask, why am I going through this? But I have that rest, rest assurances that I'm gonna get through. I'm gonna get right through it. Because that's what our Father does for us. He makes sure we get taken care of. So even in Jesus' feeling abandon, his abandonment, we've already heard it say, said, I'll never leave you nor will I forsake you. We can feel abandoned. But believe me, he's never left us. And he's always there. He's always there with us. Two disciples. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, amen. It just made me think that was, um, thank you for sharing that Sister Shilla because you, that was a good example of you not being able to watch what was happening to your son, but you were still there. Right? You weren't far away. And I think sometimes we do feel abandoned. But just like the illustration, uh, just like what Sister Shilla just shared, and even with Jesus on the cross, the Lord never left him. He was always there. And, 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 and even with Sister Shilla's son, once he had that cask and once everything was set and once everything was done, she was still there to, to receive her son in her loving arms. And I think that was a good illustration to see that sometimes we do feel abandoned, right? And we do feel like God isn't there. But if he said he will never leave us nor forsake us, the assurance Jesus had was that he knew he was the Father's son. He knew what he came to do. Right? Even to a point where he asked, Lord, i- i- if it's your will, take this cup away. Then he was like, never mind, never mind, do your will kind of deal. And I think we have to think the same things. Once we accept Christ as our Lord and Savior and we trust in him, it's no longer our will, it's his. And even when it's rough and we feel abandoned and the things we said earlier, you know, people may talk about you, you're going through that rough road. Jesus Himself experienced every pain we could ever feel. You know, he's been talked about from some of the top scholars. You know what I mean? The Pharisees, the Sadducees, that they knew the law. But his faith in God, the Father, he knew what he came to do and more importantly, he knew what the end was. And, 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 and the book of Revelations already said we win. I think is that in between reminding ourselves that no matter what we go through, God is still there. And that was a very good, Sister Shilla, thank you for sharing that because you weren't right in there with your son, but you never left him. And that's exactly how God does us.
Amen, 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 amen. John nineteen twenty-eight says, I thirst. Jesus said he thirsts. This is a word of distress. It's compared and contrasted with the encounter Jesus had with the woman at the well in John four seven. A woman of Samaria came to draw water and Jesus said to her, give me a drink. Only on the cross, Jesus was thirsty and all they offered him was sour wine. That's all they could give him. They didn't give him any water. So what do you think? Do you think the world is thirsty today? Do you think the world is thirsty today? And what are they thirsty for? Think about that for a moment. What are they thirsty for? If they're thirsty, what are they thirsty for? So what do you think?
The world is thirsty, the world is thirsty for peace.
Okay. Okay. Where else do you think the world is thirsty for? Thirsty for peace?
Everywhere we have trouble, everywhere, every country, foreign country, United States. Everywhere you go, you hear something going on, wrong fight, everything. The world is very thirsty.
Okay. Anyone else?
They're thirsty for hope.
Okay, thirsty for hope.
Um, at the time that, um, uh, before that, a little, you know, a few hours before that, uh, Jesus, Jesus wouldn't allow them to give him anything because he had to finish the suffering. So that's the sign of his suffering was ending.
Okay.
So I thirst, you know, so he was transitioning on. But before that, he would not allow them, give them vinegar, anything that was supposed to help, that could possibly be seen as helping to anesthetize him in any kind of way. Because he still had to go through the process.
Okay. I thirst. What is the world thirsty for? They're thirsty for peace. They're thirsty for hope. They're thirsty. Go ahead, Stary. I can't hear you. I know your mic is on, but I can't hear you.
Um, I would say love.
Okay. Okay. So they're thirsty for peace. They're thirsty for love. They're thirsty, thirsty for hope. What are you thirsty for?
Yeah, I'm thirsty to know Him more and to love Him.
Okay.
Glory, glory.
Okay. Okay. And if you're thirsty, how do you quench the thirst?
By going to the water of God.
Going to the word of God. Going to the, that is the only way you can put that thirst to rest. Go ahead. Rev?
I was also gonna say also his spirit. Because once we drink that and we are filled, then regardless of what's going on around us, we're, we're satisfied. We understand that these things have been spoken. This isn't anything that's new. These things have been spoken, the times are gonna come that they're like this and things is gonna get worse. So we have to, you know, stay in, in the Lord's face because that's, he's our only hope. Because we, if not, we'll just be tossed to and fro. And that's how the world is right now. They're become desperadoes and desperadoes do desperate things.
Amen, amen, amen. You watch a lot of restaurants because desperadoes sure do that. They are desperate for a lot of things.
And you know what, um, um, Reverend Allen, um, people are thirsty for a whole lot in this world. A lot. They don't know what it is. Their spirit is journeying, but they have no idea. You know, they're all over the place. They're just back and forth, but they're thirsty. They know what, they, they think they know and they go here and they go there and they join. They're just all over the place and it's um, sad. So we're, I'm so thankful that we do know our Father, that we are saved, that we have a blessed hope. These people don't have that. They don't know uh, uh, what it's like to serve a risen Savior. Uh, and so it's our job to, as disciples, to get out there in the hedges and highways and spread the gospel um, so that they will know, those that are willing to receive. But it's just a sad commentary to see people are just thirsty and they're doing everything and anything, whatever they feel like they want to do and thinking that's gonna please that and it's not. Because it's not Jesus. And as long as they're thirsting after the wrong things, they'll continue to just be frustrated. And like you all were saying, the desperadoes. And that's why we see in the mess that we're seeing out here today.
Amen, 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 amen. People are so thirsty. And they're thirsty for the wrong, their appetite is for the wrong thing. I want to know.
I believe the world is searching for identity.
Yes.
Because if there's no identity in Christ, you have no identity. Is the bottom line is like, I'm like Reverend Green and everybody say, it's not gonna change. It's not gonna get any better. So where's your identity? What are you focused on? What's gonna work for you? And instead of we thinking about what, how God is gonna work for us, we're thinking about our own individual identity and how we can get around things. And it's not working.
Amen.
We, we gotta stay focused on something and we already know, it's already been proven in God. We can, we can survive and we can prevail.
That's right.
There is an ending, ending to that story. But there's not an ending to that story if you, if you're searching for that identity of world.
That's right, that's right, that's right. And that's what's so important.
If I could add one last thing, I'm sorry. And the thing about it is people want to get rid of the pain, but they don't want to do what they need to do to get rid of the pain.
All right.
I take this pain away. Well, okay, but then you need to do this, 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 this. No, I don't want to stop, I don't want to stop that. I want to stop seeing her or him or doing this or whatever it is I'm doing. So they just want that taken away, but they don't want to take the steps that need, they need to take. So they can stop being confused. So they can stop thirsting after unrighteousness and thirst after righteousness.
All right. See, that's distress. When people are in distress, they look for anything that they can. But Jesus has given us a perfect example. There was a mission that had to be completed. And even taking the bitter wine, the sour wine, that was a part of this process. So that he can get to this very next word. That he could get to the next word. Well, he said in John nineteen thirty, it is finished. It is finished. I done sat down. I done had a good dinner. Everything is great. I've quenched my thirst. I can stand back and say, it is finished. In the Greek, it's terrestre. Terrestre. It is a word of triumph. It is interpreted as an announcement of the end of the earthly life of Jesus in anticipation for the resurrection. And somebody should get excited. It's done. It's over. I've completed the task. Whatever was set before me, I've completed it. I've done exactly what you've asked me to do. I have done more than you asked. You said to do it, I did it. I took it on myself. It's over. It's over. It's over. Are you operating? Are you operating in the finished product? Are you operating in this finished product? How do you reflect? It's finished in your life. When people look at you, can they tell it's finished? Or can they, or they gonna look at you to say, oh, something, oh, they ain't, they ain't done yet? Do they know it's finished?
I would have to say, I would have to say anyone looking at me would quickly conclude that it's not over yet.
Okay.
Because um, I've got so much work to do. Until I'm in heaven, this, I'm still being worked on.
Okay. All right. So, so, so we have, we already know the outcome. We have the victory. We already know that Christ paid the cost. He already paid the full price. There is nothing for him, nothing else for him to pay. He's done it all. He's completed the task. He's completed the task. When it comes down to salvation, he's done it all. You can't increase anything in your salvation. But you still have work to do. Reverend Greeley, you absolutely correct. You have work to do. There's work that the world needs to see. Your reflection as how you respond in the situation and anything that's going on, yes, this week. And I like what you said in the beginning, Deaconess Brunson, you said, it's every day. Resurrection Sunday is coming Sunday. But every day, we have to show the resurrected Jesus Christ in our lives. We have to show that. The world have to see it. The world has to know that we believe exactly what we say. We believe the word of God. We believe that Christ died for our sins. We believe that he rose on the third day. We believe that he was tortured. We believe all of that. We believe it. And we have to live it. When they ask you, you say, I believe it. How do you know? Because I'm not the same person I was ten years ago. Matter of fact, I'm not the same person I was five minutes ago. And I could not have gotten where I am on my own esteem. I didn't get that job just because I knew it all. It was already prepared. I just had to follow the plan. I had to surrender to the plan. I had to know that there's something better than what I had. It is something better. And the better is Jesus Christ. The better is Jesus Christ. There is nothing that you can do. There's nothing that you can say to change my mind. The better is Jesus Christ. There is nothing that you can do. There's nothing that you can say to change my mind. Nothing. Nothing. I'm better than I was an hour ago because of the Savior and the Holy Spirit that dwells within me. That's how we have to operate. The world has to see that. And the harder we go for Christ, the more they're able to see it. We are his ambassadors. We're the ones that when they say, I don't know how I'm gonna make it, we can show them. Through Christ Jesus, you can make it. Somebody turn to tw- Luke twenty-three forty-six.
Uh, Reverend Allen, while we turn in there, you always say, uh, we always hear you say, you know, let people see Jesus in you through your conduct, through your character, you know, and I think that is so important because if people can't, if they always hear you talk it, but can't see it being lived out in you, right, they're kind of like, ah, you just, you all talk and no walk, right? So, but I mean, even even being at the church for the past ten years and always hearing you say that, that's kind of like developing in my life. Let them see see Jesus in your conduct, in your character. And then.
Yes. Your conduct, your character, and let your conversation be about Jesus Christ. And you know, you know, it's amazing. We can talk about everything else. We can talk about basketball, football, baseball. We can talk about what's playing in the news. But when it comes down to talking about Jesus Christ, we get tongue tied. When it comes down to sitting down and talking about who Christ is in your life, you, ah, we get tongue tied. And everybody got a story to tell. Everybody can tell a story. Everybody can tell about what Christ has done for you. Not only on the cross, what he's doing for you even on today. He's doing something great. And we tie ourselves up in knots. We tie ourselves up in knots. So when people look at you, yes, your conduct, your character, and your conversation. That doesn't mean I can't talk about what's happening on the news. That doesn't mean I can't talk about the basketball or who joined the team and who didn't join the team. Who joined it, this football team and who didn't join this football team? Who gonna win the Super Bowl? Who not gonna win the Super Bowl? But in the conversation, guess what? You can always interject Jesus Christ, even in that conversation. Because I've done it. I've done it. I go out and play golf. People I don't know. But you know what? You know what the last thing I say to them? I say, by the way, where do you fellowship? Do you know Jesus Christ? Have you accepted Jesus Christ as your Savior? Some of them be laughing. They say, man, I knew it was something different about you. And I say, yeah. Because he can see it. And guess what? Some of those same people will turn around and they see me at the golf course. Do they run? They sure do. They run to play golf with me. They can run to play golf with me. And they want to be in my presence because of the character and the conduct that I show. And they listen to the conversation and enjoy it. Luke twenty-three forty-six. As we come to the end of the seven last words, somebody read that for us, please.
And when Jesus had cried with a loud voice, he said, Father, into thy hands I commend my spirit. And having said thus, he gave up the ghost.
Amen. Amen. He said, Father, into your hands I commend my spirit.
Glory.
He was saying, I'm reunioning back to where you are.
My God.
It was Jesus' proclamation that of his rejoining the Father in heaven. It was his proclamation. He was saying, I commend my spirit. I'm rejoining you. I'm coming back home. I'm coming home, Dad. I done finished what you told me to do down here. And I'm coming home. I'm coming home because I want to be, I want to be where you are. And I'm coming home to be where you are. But you know what? Even though I'm coming home, I ain't gonna leave him here with nothing to be able to say, how do I respond? He left his spirit. He left his spirit. That's why I get excited because it's not him. It's his spirit and me. I get excited about that. He did not leave me comforted. He did not leave me by myself. He did not leave me to my own destruction. He said, I'm coming home, Daddy, but you know what? I'm gonna leave your spirit right there so that anybody that accepts who I am, they can join us. They can join us. My Lord, my Lord. They can join us. How do you command your spirit to the Father? Have you commanded your spirit to the Father? What do you say at the end of each day? See, we take that as a finality. That we're leaving this place. No. That's not it. I'm saying, Father, I commend my spirit back to you. I'm rejoining you. The work that Christ did on the cross, he's reconciled and restored me back to you. Here, take my spirit and give me yours. I want to be a part of you. I want to be a part of your future and not my own. And not my own. It's not my future. We have a responsibility. Our responsibility is to be an encourager. Be an encourager to those that don't know Jesus Christ as their Savior. Be a reflection of the Christ that's in us. It is his spirit. It is him and it is him alone. There is nothing that any one of us can do that already that has not already been run through God. And because we accepted Jesus Christ as our Savior, we have that blessed assurance. That blessed assurance that he said, I go to prepare a place in my Father's house. There are many mansions. If it was not so, I would not have told you. So he's gone to prepare a place. And that place is where every true believer of Jesus Christ longs to get to. We want to get there. Now I got some work. Now, thank you Reverend Green, because I got some work on this side. I got some work that I have to finish. But in the process of the finishing that work, I already know the victory has already been won. The shackles have come off. Even though the enemy tries, and he gets busy. Some days he get over and others he don't. But even in the days when he get over, I turn around and say, Father, forgive me. I fell short today, but I know you still here. Help me to move forward. Help me to get past. Because that's what he's all about. And that's where we should be. I pray that tonight you take a new look in the meaning of the seven last words. Jesus uttered those words for a reason. He uttered those words for a reason so that we as believers can be in a right, true relationship with him. He paid the price to restore us and reckon us reconcile us back to the Father. We have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure that anyone we come in contact with is able to see and thank you, Deaconess Branson, to see our conduct and our character and know that our conversation reflect the Christ that's in us. Amen. Amen. Can we give the Lord a hand praise? Can we just praise the Lord for a moment, please? Can we just thank him for a moment? None of us had to wake up this morning to rise and say, none of us had to have food on our table, but he may saw fit that we had food on our table. None of us had to have a roof over our head, but he saw fit to make sure he covered us with a roof over our head. None of us didn't have to have clothes on our body. Even Adam and Eve had clothes on their body after even after they did what they did. Yes. He is a good God. He is a wonderful God. And as we reflect on tomorrow, on Friday, on Saturday, but on Sunday, when we enter into the house, we should enter into the house with a cleansed heart, a cleansed mind and ready to worship the Lord in such a way that the angels will say, who are these people? That God can say and Christ can say, those are my sons and daughters whom I am well pleased. That's who, that's how he should respond. That's what he should respond to. So I thank you for tonight. Again, I say, keep our pastor in prayer. Is there any questions before I close the prayer?
I would just like to say that I really appreciated this Bible study and the whole discussion. I didn't think at this day and stage in my life that there was more I could learn about dying on the cross. But the way that you put it together and the way the discussion developed, especially with what Sister Sheila said about, I always but tried to figure out what Jesus went through and how he suffered and how we well absolutely know that kind of suffering and sacrifice. But I never once thought about how God felt to watch his son suffer. Never. Never considered it. I felt like, you know, his son is doing his job, but the way you put it together, Sister Sheila, that that moved me because that's how he feels when we suffer, when we go through different things that we don't necessarily have to go through or that we take on. That was so deep. I was so moved by that. But everything that came together in this discussion and even with what Sister Kenny said as well, I did not know that he held off. And I've been, I've gone to church every Easter for majority of my life. I did not know, and I I'm not a scholar, so I'm gonna be honest here and vulnerable. I didn't know that he held off from drinking until he had accomplished his suffering. And we are quick to look for that relief quick when long suffering is part of it, but we want relief right away. And Jesus, despite what he went through, still had to accomplish it. So we can have this discussion right now to be accepting sometimes when we have to suffer, to be accepting when things go longer than we expect, when we it's okay, because he did that for us, proved that it can be done. And then he rose again. I just thank y'all for this. I, again, I didn't know Reverend Allen. I I personally feel like he gave you that word for me. So I just want to say thank you.
Man, amen. 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 The Lord is is just moving.
Reverend Allen?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm giving Sister Harry my my laptop because she is trying to say something.
I just wanted to say, good evening, everybody. I just was sitting there thinking to myself, um, and it goes back to Sister Sheila and what she was saying. And the thing that was just so, I'm standing up here against the wall in the hallway. But anyway, I was listening to her when she said she was outside of the door and waiting for her son, basically, you know, had to go through the process to be made whole. And she had to look away and it just touched my heart because I thought even though she wasn't in the room, she was there when he went through the process to comfort him when it was all over. And that's how I felt about Jesus. God was there to comfort and Jesus left us comfort. So it just lets me know that it's like, it's okay. You got to go through this process of living. God is sitting there. I know it may hurt. I know it may not feel good. I know times are going to be hard. I haven't left you. I'm here. It's all good. You just hold on because I'm here. I'm gonna, I've sent you a comforter, the Holy Spirit. But then you gonna get the ultimate comfort when you come here. And I just thought, and I just had to say that because it just filled me up so much. Just says, he is so close, although sometimes we think he's so far, but he is like right there, right there. So I just bless the Lord tonight and I am grateful uh, for this study about that. I'm kind of like, um, uh, my sister said, you know, all these years you've been listening to this and just to put it in perspective and how it applies to your everyday life. And so I'm just, I'm just grateful. Thank you. I had to go get some rest. God bless.
Amen. 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 Will there be another? Will there be another before we close out?
Okay, um, Reverend Allen, thank you so much. Um, there's a lot I learnt, you know, from today's um, teaching. You know, we are Christ, you know, hands over his spirit to his father for all of us.
Yes.
There's something I noticed. He hands over his spirit unto his father for us. And he built a bridge that link us to his father.
Yes.
And that's why we become sons and daughters of the Most High God.
Yes.
Now, he didn't build a wall, but he built bridge. At times, children of God, as a child of God, when God exalts you, don't allow it to be, don't build war. Because once something happen in your life or you are being challenged, it should be an opportunity for you to demonstrate the nature and the character of God. You have given opportunity for that. And you have to demonstrate it because that it it doesn't go to come every day. It is an opportunity. See the opportunity there. Don't start crying because there's opportunity to build a bridge. But if you don't understand, you build a wall, it becomes a stumbling block for the weak.
Yes.
So Christ built, you know, he died as a sacrificial lamb. And we have to be sacrificial lamb to our brother, for our brothers and our sisters in the Lord. Even in our communities, even in our families. So if anything happened, think about building a bridge and not a wall.
Yes.
Jesus.
My Lord, my Lord, my Lord. Will there be another? Amen. 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 If every hearts and minds are clear, let us take it to the Lord. Our Father and our God, we come before your throne of grace once again this evening. Father, just saying thank you. Thank you, Father, for the day. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to sit at your feet to learn what Jesus had to go through on the cross as he prepared to finish the task that you set out for him. Father, none of us are equipped in ourselves to be able to complete that type of task. But even in the midst of it, God, you show us how even as we go through our daily struggles of life, you're always there. You're always in support. And you always have an end that's going to be pleasing unto you. And we'll find peace as we go through. And we'll find peace as we go through. Father, tonight, even as we pray, I pray right now for Mother Jaquet. I pray, Father, that you will comfort her. That you will comfort her spirit. Father, she loves you so much. But I pray even now, Father, that you give her that spirit of, of comfort, that spirit of forgiveness. That she will be able to look on what is lost and find peace and find peace with those that has destroyed some of the things that she wanted to put. Father, she was doing a good deed. She was doing something very good. And yet somebody abused her. They misused her. They took hold of her possessions. But sow her the peace and let her feel the forgiveness. Even as she begins to pray tonight, as she says, Father, forgive them, but they don't know what they've done. That she will find the peace and the comfort that only you can surrender unto her. That you will give her the hope that she needs, that you will put her mind and her spirit at ease. Father, we know it's not easy. But in you, all things are possible. Because that's what you told us. You told us to put our yoke upon you. So put this yoke upon you so that she can be relieved of the stress and the distress and the discomfort of those things. But know that even if it's gone, she's still here. And she has a job to do. Let her fulfill it in the way that only she can. We pray for Mother Harris. We lift her up tonight as well. Jesus told his beloved disciple, take my mother. Take this woman and care for her. Nurture her, comfort her, provide for her, protect her, all the things that is required. Let Mother Harris feel that. Let Mother Jaquet feel that. Let the congregation feel what it means to be loved, to be comforted by you. So we thank you on tonight. Again, keep our pastor, our first lady, heal his body from the crown of his head to the soles of his feet. Father, let him come into the house on Sunday rejoicing. And let us not stink and strange if he doesn't jump around. Because that's a part of the healing process. But understand that his heart, his mind, and his spirit are all dedicated to you. And that body that he has, it's all yours, and you're gonna take care of it. So we thank you for tonight. Now let those that's been under the sound of my voice have peace and comfort in their homes tonight. Because you sit at the helm. And let us always remember as I close this prayer that we are the letter of Jesus Christ, and all that sees must see Christ in us in our conduct and our character, and Christ must always be a part of our conversation. We love you, Father, and we thank you. In the name of Jesus, we pray with Thanksgiving. Let the church say amen. Did the church say amen? Let the church say amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
Amen, amen.